All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We'll please stand for the pledge.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have anything myself to report, so we will go right on to item four, presentations. Boy, do we have some guests today. John, you want to do some introductions?
Sure. I think what I'd like to do is introduce Jack Cecchellini, the principal of Jackie Hollow, who can introduce the group and the group's leader, talk a little bit about it.
Jack? Tonight, I can't wait to introduce you to Performance Group, Jacapella. They are under the direction of Mr. Michael Martone. Mr. Martone joined Jackie Hollow just over a year ago. He's in the midst of his second year with us, and I can't speak highly enough, and the numbers speak for themselves. We are now in the neighborhood of about 300, am I right, Mr. Martone? Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students involved in choir between both campuses, that's main campus at STEM. That's a huge credit to the work done by Mr. Martone and Mrs. Schabbs here at Massey High School, who works with the students at STEM in the Choral Program. Mr. Martone, at the onset of his tenure with us, created the group you're going to hear this evening, Jacapella, and they are an audition group from the Choral Program. And, you know, I'm going to leave it at that, because they're going to do a whole lot better job than I am. So, Mr. Martone, if you guys would like to take the stage, we'll let you go.
All right. So Jacapella does a lot of performing in town. They do all kind of, a lot of community events. They do, you know, they recently did the Cedar Center. They're supposed to do the tree lighting, but we got rained out this year, which was a bummer. We worked on a lot of music for that. Their middle school group, seventh, eighth, and third grade, but they sing a cappella. It's a testament to how good they are as performers. So they're going to do two songs for you, and they're going to hear various soloists and styles of singing. They also arrange the music on their own. So they come up with ideas, and we put it into action. These aren't written charts. They're stuff that they like, and they pick, and then they sing. So that is that. One, two, one, two, three, four.
Before they start on their next song, you parents, you're welcome to come up here where you can see and take better pictures, wherever you want. Please, come on up front.
One, two, one, two, three.
Oh, that was great, you guys. Thank you so much. Another round of applause for the president.
This is just one of the new programs that happened this year, and you're going to see some other programs when Julia comes up and talks about the K-12 program, some other things that have happened. And the new staff has really brought kind of life to the program.
You mean the TV show or you yourself singing? All right. Let's go on to Julia.
Julia? Oh, there she is. She's going to use the overhead too.
You all just kind of look like the voice, the way you were seated, succeeded, listening to the singing. John, do you have it like going in?
Maybe the door has to be opened more soon.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. So, folks, hello. Welcome. Glad to be here with you tonight to follow the tough act to follow of Jacapella. I'm going to give you a little background and history quickly of music programming in Monroe, and then a lot of celebration of where we are now and looking forward. In addition to being an assistant principal at Massey, I do the fine arts instructional leadership for K-12. I get the opportunity to go into the music classrooms all around the district and to work with our staff in programming and reconfiguring as we need to, to respond to student need. The first question that people ask about the arts is, why do we include them in the public schools? And there's a million reasons. My favorite one is that music is a central part of our citizenship, whether it's Here Comes the Bride, or Happy Birthday, or the Star Spangled Banner, or TAPS. The important milestones of our life in community together are marked with music. And performing music together in a ritual form is part of what binds us together. So in our mission to prepare citizens, teaching them, giving them the ability to participate in music is part of that mission. Many other reasons about music, about why we teach music in public schools have to do with research. I'm not a fan of when people say, "Studies show," and then they don't show you any studies. So I just grabbed a couple for you that are compelling, research-based reasons that music supports academics. A popular one is that students who study music have an easier acquisition in academics and have higher grades. I did our own little Massey comparison. Our average weighted GPA in 12th grade is 3.55. Our orchestra seniors average 4.45. So Massey follows the National Center for Education Statistics in that one small area. That may be correlational research, but the study below is not. That is, that there's actually neurological changes in the child's, in the child's brain during musical training, which increase the child's ability to focus on sound with static or in a noisy classroom. So that there's neurobiological changes for students studying music in a focused manner that translate to acquiring other academic learning in a noisy classroom. In our inquiry-based, busy classroom, the neural changes that music can promote actually increase students' acquisition. So lots of good research about why we study music. And I won't keep going with the studies, but my favorite one is that the highest percentage of all undergrad majors that get into med school is music majors, which I thought was a counterintuitive piece of research. Only 44% of biochem majors are successful applicants to med school, but 66% of music majors who apply get in. So when the eighth grade parent is stressing with me over fitting orchestra into their child's schedule around other electives that might look better to colleges, I tell them, "Don't worry, you can stay with your music study, and they'll be okay." A less exciting but more concrete reason why we include music in the public schools is that it's required. It is part of the common core of learning in Connecticut, and we have K-12 curriculum standards that are part of our mandatory curriculum. We have incorporated those into Monroe's K-12 music curriculum. They fall into three basic strands. One is performance, both vocal and instrumental. That's why your fifth grader has a recorder in a little bag somewhere at that point in general music class. Literacy is part of music ed. That's both being able to compose music, notate simple music, and also to read it. And then music appreciation. Not just being able to identify genres of music, like R&B from jazz, and trace both back to their roots in early American spiritual music, but also to connect music to history, the way you can learn about American history from studying the Star Spangled Banner. Those are all parts of our general music curriculum and increase students' appreciation of music. The actual standards are a lengthy set. I thought you might like to read through all of them, so I put them in a fun format for you. I made a Wordle. These are all the Connecticut standards for general music in grades kindergarten through 12. And Wordle is where you put all the text from a document into the website, and it makes you a word cloud. The larger font identifies the words that occur more frequently. And so you can see that sort of the power standards that come through the Connecticut general music curriculum are really identify, which is the appreciation component we talk about, and perform, making music and knowing music. That is our goal for students in their K-12 experience. So the dedicated professionals who bring this music to our student, the artists who are teaching in Monroe from kindergarten through 12th grade are here in a collage, so you can see how many you can name. Mike Martone's a giveaway. He was just here. But I put them sort of across the top. I'll see if this little red light works. Right across the top are the teachers who are primarily in elementary school. Amanda Morrison is at Stepney, chorus and general music. Brad Peterson at Fawn Hollow. And this in the middle is Catherine Scheiderman. This is what happens when you tell creative people to provide their own photo. This is Catherine playing the French horn on a frozen lake somewhere, like in the tundra. You can see she's wearing ice skates there. So there's a good story behind this picture. I don't have all the details, but I think for our spring concert, we can ask her to share that story. Those are primarily the elementary school teachers. Down here are the primarily middle grades teachers. This is Mike Ansis, photographed with his trumpet. That's another thing about the music people. You often see their favorite instrument in the photo with them. Mike Martone, who is chorus and strings at Jackie Hollow. And then that's Mary Hosh Platt. She teaches general music at the middle school, but then also helps out at the elementary school, filling in. And then our six 12 teachers over here. Amy Grasso, that's instrumental music and general music. Lisa Holman is strings, and Margaret Schabbs is chorus. So you can see there are nine of them. That is a, that's a lean configuration. That is a lean task force for music, and they are really the most flexible and reconfigured and take one for the team and every year changing assignments as needed to meet the enrollment needs of our students' department. They have been wonderful over the past few years and in sort of every year reinventing our staffing arrangements so that we can provide as much programming as possible for students. I do have to give you a tiny piece of history. This is going back about five years. I want to celebrate with you where we are and tell you where we're headed, but I just have to step back for one second and just talk about five years ago, when we made staffing changes that were big for music that came along with the closing of Chalk Hill. It just kind of informs the choices we've made over the past couple of years. If you take a look at the 2010-2012 phase out of Chalk Hill, the FTE music staffing reduced at that time from 11 down to 9.0, which is where we are today. And that cut mostly was felt in grade five performance music. So band and chorus, you know, we might say sort of took the hit. We ended up with general music programming in fifth grade, but we didn't have performance music in the same way. So students picked up instruments later, just were later to start that whole program. They're now in high school. And you can see, you know, the chorus number is 2009, we had 117. Today, we had 50. Today, we have 50. 2009, band was 70. Today, it's 45. Interestingly, the strings program has made slow incremental steady growth during that time. That staffing stayed consistent during the reduction in FTEs from Chalk Hill. So it's a sign of slow and steady and consistent wins the race, kind of. And also that the high school doesn't quarterback the music program in a district. Kids don't pick up the viola junior year, really. That work, the fundamental, the foundation of the music program in high school is really late in fifth grade, when they pick up their instruments for the first time. Some districts, it's fourth grade. The high school is more the, where's the, the receiver?
Yeah.
The wide receiver? Yeah. Of the pass that the elementary school throws. So what we've done in the past couple of years, we have set our caps to restoring grade five performance music and getting instruments and vocal opportunities in front of our kids at this fundamental age. And you can see already at the middle school that there's a boon of interest. There is excitement, there's fresh energy. And at the high school, we're really looking forward to receiving those increased numbers and for the program to keep growing. So that's enough history. But I did want you to know that, just so that you know what we've responded to, to create the robust program at the high school that we are excited for. So right now, and I say right now, it's really this year, because we do change it around every year. We do the numbers, and we make people's jobs evolve to fit the numbers. Right now, in kindergarten through grade five, you get 30 minutes per week of general music, which is pretty standard statewide. In grades six through eight, we have the two campuses. We offer general music differently on those two campuses. So it's grades six and eight on the main campus for a total of 34 hours per year. We are hoping to one day be able to also staff seventh grade general music and just offer it for all those students. In, at STEM, it is for grades six, seven, and eight, but if you take performance music, it's during that same time period. So you would only get the general music offering if you were not in performance music. So you can see we have a very customized program to suit, to get with every minute we possibly can squeeze out of our, out of our staffing levels for the two campuses at the middle school. Performance music for that same group. This is new as of this year. In fifth grade, all students have chorus, 30 minutes per week. So they go to their music teacher twice a week. These are the specials, the rotations, library, art, music. You go to music twice. Once is just chorus for 30 minutes to the Connecticut Performing Arts Standard of performance music. And then the other 30 minutes is general music. And then for instrumental music, band and strings, students elected back in September if they wanted to participate. And if they did, they were put into an ensemble group. In band, we do, we are able to pull them out on a rotating basis for 30 minutes, once a week and give them a lesson. And then we have a rehearsal once a week before school. And that program is a wonderful addition. That is, that is new this year. By the spring, we will have some, we'll be able to have a demonstration for you of students who are new to their instruments. And we're thrilled with the participation. Looks like about a third of the fifth grade has chosen to participate in that new band program, which is bringing us closer to where we were in 2009. We're very excited about that. Strings has been always before school. We do not have the staffing to pull students out during the day. So they choose their string instrument, and it's before school. It says once a week. It's actually twice a week. So they have a little more before-school time. Again, about a third of our students are in strings. So when we were able to put the offering out there, it was really amazing how many students jumped on it and participated. About two-thirds of grade five comes to school early, at least once a week, to participate in instrumental music. When you get to sixth grade, you're at Jackie Hollow. Band, chorus, and strings are electives. Again, the programming is a little bit customized to the schedules of each campus. It's every other day on the main campus or every third day at STEM during the school day. And just like we said, two-thirds of fifth grade is in instrumental music. Two-thirds of Jackie Hollow students overall are in performance music. And this number, that this number back here, that's 267, that's new. That's a, that's a surge. That's lovely. And then in the high school, we have chorus, band, and strings as an elective. If you're a ninth grader and you take a world language in five classes, you have one period of the day to play with. So students who pick band, chorus, and strings, pretty much that's their, that's their elective for their whole, for their whole time. What is new here at the high school in the past two years, and a lot of this is curriculum writing that Margaret Schabbs completed, is the 40 students that we've included in the music department who are new to studying music. Our basic piano class starts up tomorrow. The intro to guitar class ran at capacity this fall. Electronic music and history of rock and roll are taught by Amy Grasso. The history of rock and roll class starts up tomorrow. And so getting students new to music at the high school level through these alternative music classes has been nice for us, to increase the students that are taking music. And we are very excited for those middle school kids that have grown in such numbers to come to the high school. We are standing by. So I wanted to share with you some wonderful news about music celebrations and student successes that have been going on around the district, both this year and in the recent past. I think the easiest way to do this is to talk to you a little bit about each person, because they are each kind of their own program. Music staffing levels respond to enrollment changes much more indirectly than classroom teaching FTEs do. Where a classroom teacher has somewhere between 18 and 26 students, a music teacher can have 100 students in a class. So when we have enrollment go up or go down a little bit, we don't necessarily add or lose a teacher. When we have a program offering, we add or lose a teacher. So if we're going to have strings at the school, we need a teacher for that. And if you have 700 students in the school or 900 students in the school, you still pretty much need a strings teacher. That's why when our FTEs changed, we had to make some programming choices. So that's, that's also why you see teachers running sort of between different schools to cover things, because regardless of the numbers of students, we want to make sure there's a program offering. The teacher who does that the most is Lisa Holman. She teaches really strings, grades five through 12. I wrote out what her day is, but she, she'll start at Monroe L. She'll come to Massey and teach STEM kids in the Massey music wing. Then she has Massey Orchestra. Then sometimes she'll run over to Jackie Hollow in the afternoon and help Mike out with the afternoon strings classes. So she's really going everywhere. The celebration of strings that happened in December was tremendous. That's Lisa Martinsky's picture of all of our fifth grade string musicians. And that's Brad Peterson in the back helping out the basses and Lisa. And these are all mostly students who are new to strings. And there were 60, there were 92 of them onstage, playing string instruments that they were brand new to. That was December. Margaret Schabbs teaches some of the electives. She wrote the guitar class and the piano class. She is a wonderful piano teacher, as well as a chorus teacher. And this concert, this is the Massey Winter Concert. Margaret teaches STEM, chorus, and Massey. So she will go back and forth over to Jackie Hollow to bring the STEM students together with main campus with Mike to practice for concerts. She'll do, all the teachers who teach both STEM and Massey will do two rounds of parent conferences and two rounds of back-to-school nights and all that kind of thing, be part of both of those. This is an interesting collaboration. This is Massey Choir, and of course, I cropped the photo poorly, but right in front of it- it is a string quartet. So it was the string students accompanying the chorus students at their concert, which was lovely. For teachers that conduct choral, to have instrumental students in front of them is quite inexperienced for conducting because the strings kids are much more precise about watching the conductor than the chorus kids. So they were sort of laughing because they're, because Margaret was making big motions and they were sort of playing all over the place. So she had to calibrate a little bit to have the additional instruments in front of her. That was a nice collaboration of our winter concert. This gratuitous selfie is in our presentation because this is an innovation. This is the Massey's new pep band. Amy Grasso took a look at marching band with me a couple of years ago, and we were concerned about numbers. We, our marching band had gotten small enough that putting them out on the field and making formations was getting difficult. So she came up with this idea to have a pep band for a year or two to try to give a protected musical nest for numbers to grow before we go back out on the field. And this is our Massey pep band. They play at football games, basketball games. The reason I include this selfie is because this is them under the basket at Fairfield University. They played a Stags game the Monday we came back from break. I think Robbie Galvez got a basketball in the face, but other than that, it was a very successful performance. And I think they had a good time. So this is, this is one of the signs of the music staff looking to provide for student interest and give kids a positive way to participate even when the numbers are still growing. Mike Ansis is at Jacquey Hollow, and he does both Jacquey Hollow, main campus, and STEM band. He goes back and forth all day to get to all the instrumental music students. One thing that Mike has really brought forward is the use of technology in our general music classes. So kids are now on a laptop, maybe that they brought themselves. They're in GarageBand or Finale and using our keyboards to play melody lines. And they're producing music that has many tracks to it and is quite elaborate. These are students that are not necessarily performance music students. This is part of the general music class. But because of the use of technology, they can compose, which is one of the three standards, is part of the, one of the three main standards for our state curriculum in general music. So Mike has brought a lot of technology into the music department. This is Mr. Martone. This is a nice picture of all the Jacquey Hollow chorus students. I don't know if that's all two hundred and sixty-seven of them. That's on the Massey stage. We were thrilled that they had to move the concert to Massey to see all the parents. That was a great sign. Mike, Mike's position is kind of a unicorn in the music world. Even though all of our music teachers are certified K-12, everyone has their own music background. Maybe they were a trumpet player or an opera singer. And so usually they have a favorite area, even though they are certified K-12. And to, to see Mike teach both chorus and strings, as well as, of course, the general music, those are two really specific areas. And it's a tremendously difficult position to have one person who has a background in both. He has performed in opera. He is a professional bass player. We were very lucky, we were very lucky to interview, to interview Mike. But again, this is something that used to be two different people at the, at that middle school. Mary Haj Platt, this year is teaching general music at Vaughn Hollow, Stepney, and Jacquey Hollow, kind of all over to fill in the gaps where the full-time teacher has too many sections to teach. And she also took the lead with our fifth grade band lessons program. So she will go to the different schools, see kids on a rotating schedule, and then prepare them to play in a concert this spring. Catherine Scheideman does that over at Monroe L. This is Brad Peterson. He is the Pied Piper of before-school strings. He has sixty fifth graders who come to meet with him. He has to do it four mornings a week. He teaches general music and chorus at Vaughn Hollow and then the before-school strings program very successfully. Amanda Morrison, she is somewhere in that picture. I'm sorry, that's a little bit dark. That is Stepney's general music and chorus teacher. And she is looking to, always looking to bring the grade level together district-wide. She's brainstorming about how we might present this, this year as a possibility. She thought it would be great to do that at Wolf Park. She just thought that would be great for me to somehow get the speakers in the trees this year. So we'll see how that goes. Maybe the farmer's market, we don't know. But Amanda is a great sort of bringer together of people. I think this was a pajama day at Stepney. They look like they're wearing jammies. And that's the chorus performance. Amanda also was tremendous at bringing students to the Da Vinci Festival last spring, which was our district-wide arts show that debuted last March. The opportunities to perform beyond just, beyond just the classroom or concerts really abound in Monroe. And the Da Vinci Festival was one where Amanda took the lead and got a lot of kids there. Catherine Scheideman at Monroe Elementary. She does the general music and chorus. She was the French horn player from the lake. And she also does the before-school band. So she has a long day at Monroe Elementary. She does her own band lessons there with them. So these are some of my favorite pictures. You know, music can be a student's varsity sport. It can be something a student picks up and has a sort of more dabbling experience in. But for all our students, we are providing a general music appreciation and performance experience. And music is alive and well in Monroe. And thank you for the opportunity to share that with you. I appreciate it.
I think one of the things that really helped us is that Julia, through Julia's coordination, we brought all the principals together, the music people together and said, "Look, how can we best, we want fifth grade, we need fifth grade and band back." We knew that that was an issue. How can we best do that? And if you remember, last year, you, the board voted and graciously gave point two position, point two extra to the point-eight teacher at Monroe L., which allowed us to do band, all fifth grade. So I think with some of these little changes that have been happening, we're allowed, we're seeing that we can bring some of those programs that we lost back in. And certainly, the numbers that Julia shared show that when you have the programs, the kids come and the kids perform and they want to be part of it. So we're excited about that. And just, you know, the excitement of Mike Martone with Giacapello and the people at the high school with guitar class. I mean, there's a girl pictured on the right who's never picked up an instrument before and in high school, she's taken the guitar. So I think music in Monroe has evolved. You know, we've talked about marching band, and that's not something that we're happy about, but we're trying to set up, set the stage so that it'll come back and it'll come back more robust and moving forward. And that's where the pep band helps. So we wanted to give you just an overview of the music program of Monroe. I don't know if you have any questions.
Julia, in terms of Massey students, and I know it varies by year, but how many roughly go on to study at a music college or?
If you count musical theater majors, which is really a theater major, but they do have a vocal performance component, we have, it varies tremendously because there are sometimes, there are packs of kids that come through and then they're all going to conservatory. Three years ago, we had Boston Conservatory of Music. We had Emerson, which is a strong music program. And we had Ithaca, actually, that was theater. And we had NYU. So that was like a group of four that all went out. Last year, we had a student actually go on to the Eastman School, which is a renowned school, especially for vocal. That's where Margaret Schaff did her, did her vocal performance. This year, we have two students auditioning for vocal performance. Two years ago, we had two students, one go to Westcon from Music Ed, directly from Music Ed, but then another one go to the Hart School of Music. We had a student just get accepted to the Hart School of Music this week, but is waiting to hear from other places. So I would say we would, we would, if you had to average it all out, it's two to three per year go on in vocal music or musical theater. When you talk instrumental music, the numbers are lower. Usually, our students who are going on instrumental performance are going to Music Ed.
So in terms of who we should know about, Massey graduates that have made it on Broadway or in some kind of?
Going back how far?
Just like in the last?
Three, four years. The last three or four years. They would still be in school. We had, we have right now, just graduating from Hofstra and sort of getting work a little bit, is Amelia Kreske. Devin Conway went to NYU for musical theater and was actually sent to England and is in a music video, which maybe we'll send the clip around if it's appropriate content. Matt Densky is stilt on tour in How the Grinch Stole Christmas. Forever, that little dog singing that song.
JD Gerson?
JD Gerson is a conductor with the New York Youth Symphony, and he was just the fellow at the New World Symphony.
Chris Yanki?
Chris Yanki? You're going back. She said three years. You're going back always. Chris Yanki's a Tony Award winner, class of ninety-one. He did, he and I did Josephine Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat together in the summer of ninety here at Massey. And he won a Tony for orchestration for Memphis, which was a musical, was a catalog musical a few years back. We have a good, we have a good, a good collection. We are well represented in the post-Massey world. I have a, I have a project I want to do, which is all the kids that have like made it to take like a headshot and a little bio and put them around in the auditorium. And when you say something out loud to the Board of Ed, you usually then have to go and do it. And so now I know I've just made myself a to-do list.
I think that'd be a great idea.
I think it would be inspiring for kids to see, you know, what it looks like at the higher levels. But it's definitely a lot of moms to talk to and a lot of headshots to get in the mail, but that would be a fun project to have.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very interesting. So next on the agenda, we've got Jack.
Actually, it's Jack and John. We're going to be partnering through this, giving you a quick update on safety and security planning in the district. And John's just calling up the slideshow right now. It's a brief one. Did you grab the clicker?
Julia has the clicker. Okay, so Jack, this is part of the PD section of the Board, of the Board of Education meeting. We, month to month, we're going to present some kind of professional development for the Board about what's happening in the district. And so this month, it's safety and security. And they are two different things. We do have a security committee, and we also have a health and safety committee. So we want to just kind of show you the difference with those, those things. I'm not going to, we're going to talk about security first. Not going to spend a lot of time on this slide because we all know this. Jim's talked about this many times, our four tiers of school security. You know, and we're going to talk about each tier a little bit, but you know, the technology part, the structure, we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort on the structural part to keep safety. We have a great relationship with the police, with the law officers in law enforcement in Monroe. And this year, we're really focusing on behavior and behavior of students and behavior of staff and behavior of parents to keep our, in order to keep our schools safe. So we're going to talk a little bit about it too.
And we're just going to talk a little bit about what's in the red there. The plan was developed back in time. It's been revised in recent years. It's been implemented as a district-wide plan. We're continuing, continuing to reflect on how well that plan works and revise it. Just to give you one quick example, as recently as last week, we got a series of guidelines from the state, which included some recommendations from the Sandy Hook Panel. And as a result of that information, we're going to have to take another look at our plan and make some tweaks to it. And that's pretty much ongoing process, whether it be recommendations from our committee or from the state or the local police department.
Just so you know, Jack and I co-chair the Health and Safety Committee in the district month to month. So we, our responsibility is to deal with safety and security. I don't know if I said that in the beginning. One of the things that we really focused on was training in drills. We wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page. Part of that is through KIRMA. And KIRMA is our insurance company, our liability insurance carrier, and they have a lot of programs for training for us. And so they actually come to our meetings. They look at what we're doing as far as slips and falls, as far as the behaviors of using tags and security in the building, and they give us recommendations. So we found that very helpful. We also have training from the Health Department, they're going to talk about that. Jack, Jim, and I both spent two days last year with the Connecticut Emergency Management and Homeland Security people, mostly law enforcement officers, and we were trained on how to look at security. So we spent two days doing that and we found that very helpful. We've also changed in the district, because as you know, you may or may not know, we used to have to have a fire drill every month. Well, now the law's changed where we have to have some kind of drill every month. And so we have developed these monthly common drills in each school. So the week of January eighteenth, we, we're going to have a lockdown drill in each school. And so each committee, each school sets up that drill. We have the police there if we can, if they can come, so they can help make some suggestions. And then we come back to our committee and we review those drills. And we say, what went well, what didn't go well. One of the things that keeps coming up is, well, one of the things that came up last year with these drills was that people in the playground in elementary school, if they're out in the playground or out in PE, they don't know that there's a lockdown. So they could be walking back into a building when there's a lockdown. So what our committee did was we petitioned and talked to the district and Jack's group, and we had walkie-talkies for all the people that go out in the playground. So now, not only do we have a lockdown, over the last week, we have a lockdown, lockdown on the walkie-talkies. So those are the kinds of things that happen.
Regarding facilities and technology, as you know, all of the Sally ports are complete at this point, so that was a lot of work. And it's nice to have all those fully up and running. Technology updates are ongoing. We continue to look at places where we can add some swipes. We added some swipes recently at the Board of Ed offices. We add video cameras as we need to in places where we find weakness. The staff ID badges are fully in place. That was a great addition, something that's just become a part of our regular, ongoing work here in the schools. Student IDs are now fully in place at the middle school and high school level. And as mentioned with the copier contract, you know, that's something we're looking to implement as another way to reinforce use of the IDs with staff, that is. And then lastly, the town, I recently had a meeting with Mike Flick, actually, it's probably about three or four weeks ago now. And he's looking at a grant to add a similar system to, very similar to ours over on the town side. So that would be nice, too, in terms of having a common process in both locations and common consoles for managing those systems.
So as you can see, security is, it was on our mind, has been on our mind, and we spent a lot of time doing, doing that for this year and the last couple of years. So now we're going to talk about safety.
So with safety, we're going to give you a quick overview on a few areas. Health Department training, we've worked closely with the Health Department. We're going to highlight some of that for you. We're going to talk a little bit about weather-related emergencies, of which we've had a number last week. The communications relating to how we get the word out on these kinds of emergencies, what are the procedures? And then a little bit about playgrounds and gymnasiums, which are places where we can have more accidents occur other than, more so than other areas. So with the Health Department, they've been, we've got a really good working relationship with them. We had the Director of the Health Department come in and meet directly with our head custodians, talk specifically about cleaning and sanitizing. We did this in advance of the flu season so that we have good clarity in terms of what are the kinds of things we need to do to promote the safest environments for our staff and students. We also discussed medical protocols. Health Department also worked directly with our nurses. What are the things they have to do should there be an outbreak of some sort, whether it be serious infection or flu or the like, so that they understand their roles and responsibilities with that sort of event? And then lastly, health procedures. The Health Department plays a direct role in those kinds of events. How do they work with us as a school district? So we look to have all that kind of discussion occur prior to any event so everybody knows what their responsibilities are previous to getting into an event. And then lastly, and really most importantly, the ongoing consultation. We do get updates from the Health Department about outbreaks across the country and how they might be progressing across the country and how they might impact Connecticut and specifically Monroe. So this way, we get a heads up as to what might be coming our way and we can prepare for it in advance of it getting to us. And then related to that, if we see something on our side of concern, we reach out to them and say, "Look, we see this. How should we be addressing it?" Really is a very healthy, excuse the pun, relationship between the schools and the Health Department.
Weather emergencies, I'm going to talk about this. It's kind of been on my mind for the last couple of weeks. I have to tell you that Jim, Jim kind of does this quietly, handles it. Now that Jim has been out for a little while, it takes two of us, Jack and I have been doing it. One of the things that we wanted to show, what I wanted to show you was, if you look at the right, these are the emails that came in starting last Sunday when we had the Monday issue. So Sunday at four-twenty, I get.
Oops, sorry about that.
I wanted to show you that, but I can't.
I'm going to just go back.
We have a meteorologist. I'm not sure if everybody knows that, but there's a meteorologist that the district, you know... Um, and so, the first thing that happened on that Sunday is that, um, I got a four-twenty PM, uh, update about the weather that's gonna happen on Monday, and, and it's a pretty extensive weather report, what's gonna happen, what the time factors are, and at that time, he calls for a four AM, um, conference call. So, at three forty-six, you get the first weather check, which tells us, okay, this is what I said last night, this is what's really happening now, let's get on the, let's get on the phone at four fifteen. So, Jack and I, um, at quarter to four, as you can see when that comes in, Jack and I get on and we talk to the DPW, we talk to the Department of Public Works, ask him what he sees, what's going on with that, um, we talk to, um, the Police Department, um, call the Police Department. Gabby is our contact with the bus company, so we talk to Gabby with the bus company, and then we get on the four o'clock, uh, four fifteen or four o'clock conference call, and we hear what are the area superintendents are doing. And nobody likes to be out there by themselves, and so we take all that information, and we're starting to talk about what's going on. And as you can see, even when a decision's made at four fifteen or four forty-five, we get a weather check at five o'clock, at five oh six, and he tells us what he's thinking. And then at, at five fourteen, uh, all the, uh, the superintendents are saying, "Okay, what is Monroe doing? What's Trumbull doing?" And we start getting that stuff. So, you can see there's another one at six o'clock, at six thirty. This was the day that I'm standing in the window at Central Office saying, "It's supposed to be snowing and be over in two hours," and, um, that was the day that we had to make a, um, an update and say, "It was a closed, or closed school." We don't, nobody likes to do that, but there really was no option at that day. So, um, with all of us, it's a group effort, um, I certainly know what Jim's going through when he has to do it now, um, and so we've, you, we kinda take the team approach and we're doing it. But I just wanted to show you that, 'cause I thought it was pretty interesting when you get these repeat things from the meteorologist.
And then, just so you know, uh, the communications is a whole new world. If you go back in time, even five, six years ago, before the automated systems, everybody had to watch TV or listen to the radio, now we're very fortunate, I mean, it's just become normal procedure. Five thirty, you know the phone call's gonna come, right? Or the text, or the email. So, uh, it really makes life a lot easier on everybody to have that system. But in addition, Gabby gets onto the, uh, TV and radio stations and gets that out as well. Um, uh, for families at home and students, the first place it always goes is onto the website at, uh, four fifteen, as soon as the agreement is made about what we're gonna do, the first thing I type in is the update on the website. So, that goes out right away, uh, if you're eager to know, you know, ten minutes before everybody else.
And it's not just weather, um, if there's an issue with a bus, Jack can send out a school messenger just for those parents on that bus. If it's an issue with a grade, or a school, we can just do that. So, um, the school messenger has really been very helpful, um, for us, and I think it's kept the parents well informed.
And then, just to keep you informed, uh, we do constant, uh, safety checks on our playgrounds and our gymnasiums, these are major activity areas, we wanna make sure that those environments are safe for, uh, students at all times. So, we do work with, um, vendors whose jobs are, uh, maintaining this kind of equipment, they come and look at the equipment with us, make recommendations about what kind of repairs or changes we should be making, uh, and this is something we do on an ongoing process, as well as school self-assessments, where a school would say, "You know what? We're concerned about this piece of equipment, what should we do with it? Should we repair it? Or should we replace it?" Uh, so those are two areas we spend a lot of time. And then the other thing we're doing right now, too, and this came about just in the last week or so, is we are taking a look at our stages as well. There's a lot of equipment there, fly equipment up, above heads, uh, that we're looking at just to make sure that everything is in good working order and is, uh, safe for everybody that uses those spaces.
And, you know, as you know, as, as we've been coming here, it is our highest priority. Safety and security is our highest priority, we gotta have to make sure our kids are safe and that they, they're in a safe environment. We've come a long way in the recent years, and, and even in the behavior of our kids, nobody puts a rock in the door now to run out to their car, we don't see that as much. Um, parents understand that when we say, um, "Please, will you buzz in?" And then, "We'll wait to go," um, and they don't hold the door open for people. So, people are starting to see that, we've come a long way in recent years, and we're always gonna review and revise as new thoughts come up, as, as new ways to look at things as we work with the Police Department and the other state agencies. We're gonna revise our, our plan, it's a living document. So, that was just kind of an overview of what we're doing with, uh, safety and security. Any questions about what we're doing?
I have one. Um, with all the, the new things and the new procedures, have you noticed that it's working well within the schools? I mean, has there been any crazy breaches of any sort?
Not that it's been reported, I, I think it is working well. You know, uh, I was leery in the beginning of saying to a parent, "I can't hold the door for you, I'm sorry, can you buzz in first?" But everyone seems to understand that. A few weeks ago, I was covering for Becky Cosisco, and when parents take their kids, um, you know, pick up their kids after school, I asked for everybody's ID. Um, you know, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, they might've been upset that they had to show me an ID. No one was upset, everybody understood. So, I think people's attitudes, especially since, you know, the tragedy happened so close to home, I think people are understanding what we're trying to do and are appreciative of it.
Thank you. John, are the students using their ID badges for lunch?
They, they are using it for lunch, uh, it's not going as, it's not happening as quickly as we want to, some kids forget about it, um, they have to go back, um, I, I was just at one of the schools where, in middle school, if you forget your badge, you're gonna have to go, um, to the back of the line in order to put your number in, so that we can speed everyone going forward. So, we're trying some things, it's, you know, it's not perfect yet, but I think as we continue to do this, it'll get better. I know at the high school, they seem to be working, it seems to be working better because they have to have their badge to take out a Chromebook, um, and, you know, the cafeteria's working, and, and we're looking at other things like printing and things. So, I think as we start doing more and more things, it gets to wear them.
Great, thank you very much. All right, uh, let's move on to item five here, the consent agenda, if I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Um, consent agenda is approved, and I will move on to reports to the committees and the zones, and start with our Massey representatives.
All righty, good evening. Um, to begin, next Friday is the dance showcase preview in school, and then the dance showcase itself, um, will be on Super Bowl Sunday at one PM, and the dance showcase preview happens every year, and it's, um, in the auditorium, and the student body really enjoys it, and we're always so impressed with the dance team, so we're looking forward to that. And then, FAFSA Help Night Part One was January eighth, and the Part Two is this Thursday night at six thirty, and most of the seniors, um, at highs, in, at Massey should be in the middle of their college applications and starting to hear back, and FAFSA is really the parents' like, primary duty during the process, and, um, so Massey puts on a night that helps the parents pretty much complete the process of filling out the financial forms, so.
And also, the exams, midterm exams end tomorrow, period seven, seven and eight exams are tomorrow, and then all exams are over, so we're very excited about that, and Semester Two starts Thursday, so one half of the year is already over.
And no sports going on?
Um, there are sports going on, um, I know the basketball team and the hockey team have been doing really well, I don't think hockey has lost a game yet, and I know the boys and girls basketball team have both only lost about two games each, maybe? So, all of our sports teams are doing well in the winter.
And when's the next musical? Is there anything that is in the works?
I know The Great Gatsby is going to be the, uh, drama for this, um, season, and I think that happens sometime in May, maybe?
It's the night of the Da Vinci Fest, starts, I think it opens at Da Vinci Fest.
Oh, in March.
When is, when is Da Vinci Fest?
Uh, March twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Excellent, thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports? Okay, uh, we will move on to public participation, if there's anybody in the audience who cares to speak.
John, did you want to go over about ad hoc?
Sure, ad, ad hoc, uh, first of all, I think it's, um, I, I spoke with Jim between the ad hoc committee and the Board of Ed, and he wanted me to remind you that it's because of your leadership that we had this ad hoc committee, and that we wouldn't have had, uh, a comprehensive report that we have if, if you didn't take the leadership role in that in. And, um, so, he wanted to thank you for that, and, and I also, um, it, it was a very comprehensive report. So, today, we, we, we heard from the architects and the demographic, um, study group, and they presented us, um, our enrollment, and they presented, um, different scenarios. Again, I, I'll say this, that it is really now the job of the ad hoc committee to take those scenarios and to really examine them for costs and feasibility and, and what will work for us. And so, w- we know that this is gonna take some time. Um, it, we're probably only, only gonna be able to look at one of those, um, scenarios per, per meeting, one or two. And so, we're gonna do that, we figure it's gonna last through the summer, so that by early next year, we're gonna be able to come back to this group and present what we've found, what we found. And then, it's, it's up to the Board of Education at that point to look at the different scenarios or look at our recommendation and see where to move it forward. So, it is a, it's a daunting task when we, we start looking at it, but it's something that I think is gonna really be helpful for the town, um, and the, and the schools.
Thank you, John. Um, I didn't think I saw anybody for public participation, just wanted to make sure. Okay? And we will move on to report of the superintendent.
Okay, um, Gabby's gonna go over the fund statement? So, Gabby?
Sure. Um, so the, the real highlights are that our insurance claims are continuing to trend somewhat positively, or very positively. If you flip to, uh, page twenty-five of your packets, you'll see they've come back down for the month, we had about five hundred and twenty-one thousand in claims for the month of December, um, and we have about one point eight million dollars in our balance, which, um, John continues to tease me, and he's convinced that we'll end up quite higher than that, but we'll see, I'm quite the conservative one, I don't really believe that. But, um, so we're still trending positive, and, um, I believe that our budgeted projection of keeping our insurance dollars flat should still be the case as we go through the next few months. Um, the other thing is, we have started transfers, um, and again, they're just being done on a relatively low level, it's really building-based, and we're trying to keep them within the same object or the same accounting code. And finally, Chris Nowacki, the Town Public Work Director, and I went to a seminar last Tuesday, put on by Tradition Energy. Tradition is our, uh, our electricity broker, it was very interesting, he had talked about, um, different rates of electricity in different rates of, different regions of the country. New England sadly has the misfortune of having the highest electricity rates in the entire country. If we happened to take Monroe and put us in Texas, we'd be paying about a third of what we pay for electricity. Um, the other thing that was very interesting is, is we all know there's, the cost of oil is very low right now. Um, apparently, the consensus is that oil will probably go back to around eighty dollars per barrel by the end of this year. So, these low costs that we're seeing in oil, um, will probably not last, and that's not just coming from Tradition, that's coming from other energy brokers, so it, it's something to keep in mind as we move forward in the budget process. Um, if you recall, I said we had locked in oil for our commitments starting in September at two, two dollars and fifty-seven cents a gallon, so I think we did quite well, if we had waited, we'd probably be a lot higher than, um, we are now. So, that's, that's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's really about it.
Okay, the, the other thing I wanna talk about is, um, I did talk with Jim again between the, the meetings, um, he just wants to say, let everybody know that he is doing well. Um, I also, I wanna let everyone know that he's still, um, been a great partner in this, um, I talk to him every day, um, so, uh, he's doing really well, it'll be a few more weeks before he comes back, but, uh, we miss him, and he's, and, um, he just wants to give his best to everyone and thank everyone. Um, there are, there is two more pieces of information that, um, I know that Joe Cobza, um, probably is excited to share with you, but I'm gonna get to share it since I'm sitting up here, so I'm gonna do that. Uh, we found out on Friday that Massey High School received a sixteen thousand dollar grant, um, because they applied for a grant because they are a school of distinction. If you remember correctly, uh, Massey and, and Monroe were, were named schools of distinction, that was based on, among other things, but their cap scores and their graduation rate. Um, we are one of ten high schools in the state to, to get that distinction called the School of Distinction, to get that, um, to get that honor. But what more, what's more important is that there were three ways to get that honor. You could have the highest achievement in cap scores, you can have progress, the overall progress of your cap scores, and, um, you could have progress in your subgroups, and there are different kinds of subgroups. Massey got all three areas of distinction, so that was important, and I think that was something that we're all really proud of. And the fact that they wrote this grant, the sixteen thousand dollar grant, and they are one, uh, four out of seventy-three people who are L's, where only four got this grant, and Massey High School is one of them, half of the money has to go for Massey to go on the road to share what we've been doing with BYOT and, and incorporating some of the, uh, the capital questions and, and inquiry base in our classroom, and the other half is for purchases to help students, and I talked to Joe, and he's going to use that to add thirty more Chromebooks, another Chromebook cart to, to the school. With that Chromebook cart, we'll be able to, um, help support more instruction, kids will be able to take out more Chromebooks, and, you know how we, last year, when we had the testing, the SPECT testing, we had to move one Chromebook from schools all around? With that cart and another purchase in the middle school, we don't have to do that anymore, all the schools will be self-sufficient, which means that there'll be Chromebooks at Massey while Jackie Hall is taking the exam that Massey students can use, where last year they had to go, um, and we had to borrow the Massey cart. So, I think that's important and credit, congratulations, Joe, for writing that grant and getting that grant, sixteen thousand dollars is nothing to, to sneeze about.
Thank you very much, and I really, um, you know, I hope you come to surprise, this is, uh, came at nine o'clock, so, this is a special leader, I'm really a model, and a lot of that, everybody who's done with Julia, Lisa Peterson really took it head-on, I really gotta thank, and give a lot of credit to, to those special leaders for doing a lot of work with that.
Well, the grant's great, but your achievement is certainly recognized as well.
Absolutely.
It's a wonderful job for you and your team.
The other thing that happened that, uh, was surprising, unexpected, but really, really exciting, is that, um, Matt, Joe heard from the State of Connecticut Department of Education that Massey is one of four schools, and the only high school in the state of Connecticut, so one of, only four schools in Connecticut, and the only high school in Connecticut, that was, um, recommended, that was nominated by the Commissioner to be, um, to apply, to be able to apply for the two thousand fifteen National Blue Ribbon School. So, they're nominated to be a Blue Ribbon School, that's, that's huge, that's a national honor, and now, the work starts because Joe has, Joe and his team has to come up and put together the application process. But you have to be nominated by your state commissioner, and so Massey is the only high school in Connecticut that was nominated by it. So, it was a good week last week for Massey High School, it might not have been good for the weather, but it was great for Massey High School and Joe, and so, um, I just wanted to share that with everyone, and, and we'll keep you, um, updated as we go through the nomination and the applica, I'm sorry, the application process for the Blue Ribbon School. It'd be nice to have Massey High School as a, a National Blue Ribbon School, and well-deserved.
I think the prior leadership of the high school probably had a...
I didn't really wanna say that, but... Sort of like that bandit going out, so...
That's it? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, old business, uh, Gabby, update on the special exemption permit?
Sure, um, I gave each of you a copy, um, of what the town's special exemption permit, exception permit looks like. Um, we are going to be filing one of these for the, uh, stadium field, because if you actually read the language in the exception permit that was last done in nineteen ninety-seven, we currently are somewhat out of compliance. It talks about events ending on Friday and Saturday nights and, in, ending the usage of the lights by ten PM. Um, unfortunately, a lot of times, by the time our football games end on Friday nights, and by the time everybody clears off the field, it is after ten PM. Um, weekday events, they talk about ending the lights no later than nine PM, uh, some of our soccer games, which run forty-minute halves, tend to go past that point. So, we wanna just update the, uh, the permit to make sure that we're complying with what we actually do, and we're also trying to, um, we're going to actually have a new clause in there talking about events occurring on Sundays and that we, and the use of lights by six PM. We currently really don't use the field that much on Sundays, but if on the off chance we had an activity which wanted to, we'd like to be able to do that, 'cause right now, we actually can't. we actually can't. So again, the last time this was updated was 1997, so I think it's kind of due time. And there's a lot of language and verbiage in the permit that really doesn't apply. It actually talks about building. We're strictly looking to change the language for our current usage. We're not adding anything at this time. We're not making any renovations. We're not tearing anything down. We're not building anything. But we still have to do, we still have to follow what the town rules are in terms of planning and zoning. So we have the list of butters, which are all the property owners around Massey, so the planning and zoning department will send them a letter saying, "We're looking to do this." We're going to send a letter to Aquarian, we'll send a letter to Inland Wetlands, and hopefully then we'll get on P&amp;Z's agenda, and they'll hopefully allow us to do this. And that's pretty much where we stand with the permit.
Questions? Thank you. And RFP feasibility study on our turf field?
Which is also me. So I believe you were all emailed a copy of the proposed RFP. What it is, is it breaks out the concept of a turf field into two phases. The first phase would be that we hire a consultant who would scope out the survey, the design, and the engineering, and then if, based on that feasibility study, which the expectation will probably cost somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000 to do all that, and then if the town, if we then decide that this is a good idea, we would then go to all the various town agencies, so Board of Finance, Town Council, probably planning and zoning also. And if we had a successful bonding, or a successful referendum for bonding, that same consultant would then be responsible for the permitting, the selection, and construction administration. So that engineer or that architect would then help us through the actual RFP process for actually putting out the bid to do construction services. So the first piece is getting an architect slash engineer to actually design the facility. The next phase is the permitting and the actual construction of the facility. So it's in two pieces. With that said, you've asked for a field study, which I believe Jack will present to you in early March.
In March.
March. That might also, depending upon where that comes out and what you decide, that might also need an engineer. We could potentially wrap that into this, or we may not. We might have to do that separately, but I don't think that would cost more than $10,000, so we wouldn't have to necessarily put it out to an RFP.
And we'll present that to you in March, and you can decide at that point where you want to go with that field study, but Jack has been working on it.
But they are two separate pieces. So we did send this RFP out to a former business manager who actually just completed a turf project in Torrington, and he is going to get back to us in the next couple of days, which is why, when you look at it, there are no dates added as to when it will actually occur. We didn't want to bind ourselves in the dates yet.
All right. Thank you, Gabby. That does it for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
On paper?
Uh-huh.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology brings science to life.
Technology brings science to life.
Technology helps us make things better.
Google Earth is awesome.
Google Mine is awesome too.
I love it. One of my teacher gave me the opportunity to do my homework on the headspace.
Snow running game is lots of fun.
Technology awesome.
Technology awesome.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
Technology re-science the life.
I love it when my teacher gives me the opportunity to do my homework on the head of the day.
Technology re-science the life.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
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 Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology helps us make things better.
Google Earth is awesome!
Google Mine is awesome too!
I love it when my teacher gives me the opportunity to do my homework on the head of the day.
There's no learning game that lasts as long.
Technology is awesome!
Technology is used in our everyday lives to make things easier and more efficient. We are happy to have it be used in our education.
We like technology because it makes learning fun.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology re-science the life.
Technology helps us make things better.
Google Earth is awesome!
Google Mine is awesome too!
I love it when my teacher gives me the opportunity to do my homework on the head of the day.
There's no learning game that lasts as long.
Technology is awesome!
Good morning, everybody! And today we brought some really very special people with us today. The step down into school walk, now come with a big round of applause!
Colors of the sky.
I saw the sunrise of a thousand eyes. I saw the melting colors in the sky.
You're a grand old plan, you're my life. It forever be spreading. You're the apple of the land I love. The home of the green and the rain. Every heartbeat's true for the red eyes. Every heartbeat's true for the red eyes and blue. It's never close for a breath. So if all the great things need to run, keep your eye on the rainbow flag.
My head up in the air, don't stop. Say hey, yo, don't you let go. I wanna celebrate and live my life.
I saw the sunrise. It's hard to believe that I could see. You were always by my side. Thought I was alone, but you were always by my side. It's feeling like no one. I want to know, I want to know. I never had so much. Don't you want to know? The way I feel.
Colors of the sky. Colors of the sky.
There's a star in you, you're the star that shines. The light that shines. Let's go, midnight, like the star of the night. Maybe you're a firework, I'm a storm. It ain't gonna fall, it's gonna fly. You're the star of the sky.
I saw the sunrise. I saw the sunrise. Sunrise. I saw the sunrise.
Good day tomorrow, say it in a dream. Desperate sorrow, it's left us all green. The hill we man, the hill we man can. The hill we man can, 'cause he makes a difference. But it makes the world taste good.
Colors of the sky. Colors of the sky. Colors of the sky. Colors of the sky.